Good evening, welcome to the town's industrial planning board meeting. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance? Zach, could you lead us off, please? Thank you. First order of business is the approval of the March 5th meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Duvall?
Yes.
Mr. Abby?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
And I vote yes, minutes have been approved. Now, we will open the meeting to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the board on any active application, you can do so now. This big crowd, nobody wants... We will close the public input and move on to the first agenda item. This is to set a public hearing for a two lot subdivision. It's property at 5691 Mudmill Road. The applicant is Ryan Landsafame. Good evening. Good, thank you. How are you? Can you provide your name, please?
Ryan Landsafame.
Thank you. You can go ahead and just describe to the board what it is we're looking to do.
I'm looking to split a piece of property that we bought, try to separate the garage that's on the side lot of the property and the main residence that's way a bit over to the other side. We were hoping to cut off the property at the neighbor's yard on the left side of the property there. Pretty much bring it straight back to the back property line.
Right along here?
Yes. Yep, that's correct.
And this is a separate parcel owned by a different party, right?
Yes, correct.
And then the garage is right here?
Yes.
You were recently in front of the zoning board for a variance for... For the property?
Yes.
And so tonight, we're just going to schedule the public hearing. Whether if there's any questions, we'll go ahead and ask questions.
Watlands. I'm reading the minutes from the zoning board meeting. There was discussion about the Watlands. There's a buffer, correct?
Yeah, so the buffer is, I mean, it's past Mudmill Road even, the hundred foot buffer. I mean, it's well within the buffer already, the building. I mean, the buffer, I mean, even on the other side of, you know, a hundred foot buffer, I'm assuming that's what you guys are speaking of. Yeah, that's across Mudmill Road as it is. Or a hundred yard, I think it was.
That was the reason for the variance. Neither lot will have proper area variance without, you know, with the Watland encroaching on the property. In fact, the garage is zero point zero usable property. Just, I've never seen that. Chuck, any questions? Mary?
So is your plan to sell parcel B? Is that...
You're going to sell the residence, yeah.
The residence part? And then you'll be left with the parcel that you couldn't build anything further on?
Right, the storage building, yes.
Okay, and you're okay with knowing you can't ever build anything else on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just want to make sure that's said.
Zach?
I'm all set.
Mike, any questions? Has the county looked at this yet, do you know? There was some discussion from the GBA about the county.
Yeah, it went to the county because it also has the subdivision part of the application. So there was a... Has that been shared with you?
I have not seen it yet.
All right, we'll get it before the next meeting.
Neil, any thoughts on this? Mark? Neil, would you present the motion to set the public hearing, please? And do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second? Okay.
Fine.
I'm not going to be here the sixteenth. You're on vacation. Is there any way we can...
We can change, we need a new date.
It would be the first Wednesday of...
Is it seventh?
Okay.
Who made the motion? With the amendment? And Simon Second? Chuck, with the amendment?
Yeah, I'm okay with that amendment.
Mr. Duvall?
Yes.
Mr. Abby?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Have a nice vacation. Next item on the agenda is a continuation of a site plan review. This is for the property at 6306 East Taft Road. This is a proposed 7,344 square foot building.
Good evening. Tim Coy, Ryan Uzian Roman? I just have smaller plans of what we already handed in.
Thank you.
We were last year, last year, last year. It's been a while since we've been in front of the board. If you recall, this is the property, you know, ready to have that here, I think that road.
This is the property just east of the Hiawatha Fasteners prop building. They are looking to build, right now will be an empty building. They don't have a specific use right now. If you recall, they're looking just to build it, then they'll have to come back in for an actual site plan for whatever use that someone comes in to use it for. We apologize, it's taken a long time because the original engineer was very difficult to get comments from and get responses from, so we had to get a new engineer. And we finally did get the report that Mark was looking for, and one thing that we never actually got revised was the existing elevations of the building. Specifically, want to make sure that the light, you understand that the lights they're showing on the elevation drawings that were originally set in were incorrect, and they cannot be used like that. We acknowledge that. We could not get the engineer to change those drawings, just literally couldn't get him to respond. The lights on the proposed site plan that we have here are the ones that we will be using. We did submit light cuts for those proposed lights, so just want to make sure that's known. The other comment that was brought up in Mark's comments is specifically the concrete curbing around these islands in the parking lot. The owner would like to not put concrete curb in. However, you know, she understands the board's concerns and the board's desires to have concrete curb. Again, she'd rather not, but in a matter of trying to get this to move forward and potentially get approvals, she would be willing to do it if it's something the board has to have.
Jim, question?
So the proposed building, is this for storage or...
There's a, there's a, it's got, there's office space up front, and then there's like a open, quote unquote, possible manufacturing, not necessarily manufacturing, but an open space in the back for storage and stuff, yes.
And this would be part of why, yeah, Hiawatha Fasteners?
Nope, this will be a to, eventually, this will be a totally a separate use.
Okay.
Again, she doesn't have a specific use, and we have it right on the statement of use down in here, that they have to come back for an actual site plan if and when they get a user for the building. So the idea is they're going to build it, hopefully advertise it, and then that's for specific use, and that person will have to come back this board for, to get approvals for that use.
Okay.
Well, this parking lot reminds me of our neighbors up the road here on Frank's. His parking lot had a very similar situation.
Yes. I mean, this is all brand new asphalt. Frank's was a little different where it was all existing.
So they really would rather not put up those barriers in the parking?
Yeah, they'd rather not, like, specifically around these islands, typically do the concrete curb, the half foot reveal, concrete curb.
Mainly for plowing and such?
I'm sorry?
Mainly because of plowing?
I, plowing is one, and probably cost is another, but yes.
I kind of like the way that looks, because that parking lot looks bigger than up here.
Yeah.
It would be my preference to say, you know, put those in.
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
So with our design standards, this isn't in an area that we would have to stick to that?
No, it is, except the application came in before we actually had those.
So we have a choice, or, you know?
There's some discretion.
Discretion.
Yeah.
At Frank's, we took one or two out because of the plowing, the way it was set up.
Yes.
If I remember. This one seems to be set up better than Frank's, those two that we removed.
So, we haven't seen elevations or anything?
You should have elevation lines.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
I have them here.
Oh, you do?
Yep.
Should have handed them out.
Yep.
Is that green? Is that...
Yep, it's a, the dark forest green.
So it's green, gray, and...
Yeah, that's supposed to be just a wood color.
Okay.
It's an exposed beam.
Okay.
However, the coloring from, yeah, the architect clearly didn't depict it very, a very good wood color.
No. So when they have, they don't have a use for it yet, but would she be using it for, for existing business at all?
To stay empty.
Okay.
I think previously, the neighbor was concerned about runoff.
Yep.
Flooding. Does that address?
I, I won't speak for Mark, but we had to get an engineer involved to do a full drainage report, and we revised all the grading, and we actually revised the parking area specifically for those concerns. But again, I'll let Mark make sure he's all set.
Yeah, I mean, the, what they're doing, it will not block or impede the drainage from the adjacent property. And if that property, and in fact, it might improve it since they're going to put in a more pronounced swell, and we'll bring the stormwater down to the culvert under Taft Road. So it will not, again, impact the drainage. If there's an existing drainage problem on the site, it's independent of this site, that will still likely be the case. But again, this project won't make that any worse.
One more comment.
Yeah.
So the neighbor next to Hiawatha Fasteners, the new build, I think the board requested that they did a, like, color match the garage door. I think that was your idea. Did you have any concerns with the white garage door against the green building?
This was same one?
This is a different one.
It's a different one.
The one she, we talked about that before, was a different sort, right?
I understand, but I'm asking, so you're going to ask the neighbor two doors down?
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm just saying, she was asking, when did I ask? Yeah, I think she thought you were talking about this one.
Not to see a big white door, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm asking if you have any concerns, because the neighbor two doors down.
Got to talk louder into the mic, please.
So the ne, the neighbor two doors down, we requested that they color match the door.
I think on that site plan, like, that was the main focal point of their building. To me, this, the wood elevation, that would be the eye catcher of the building, to me. However you look at it.
We don't mind changing the color of the door, that's not a big deal, one way or the other.
What do you think in the same...
So, the elevations are a little, if you can see here.
Set back.
Set back. Yeah, it's set back. So there's a garage door, it's exactly here. It's not to tell from this.
Yeah, you can't tell.
Right.
So, yeah, you don't see it down here.
Yeah.
It will be set back to...
What are the other materials? I mean, this is going to be wood.
I think this is a metal frame, and then this is a, what was it, an incinerator here? What's the word I'm looking for now?
Wayne's cutting?
Wayne's cutting.
That's supposed to be on here?
It's on the color rendering. Here.
No, I mean...
Oh, you mean like a label?
Curvature of what it did.
Quick check. I can add it to the site plan note that it's specifically going to be stone?
Well, is it? It is called that. Oh, okay. Building period.
Oh, stone piece. Yes. Yep.
What are your thoughts?
So, my thoughts, I'm fifty fifty. I don't care if the door is white, I don't care if the door is green. I just think it's, I'd like to be consistent. If we're going to ask the neighbor two doors down to color match, and then not this one. Also, two with the curvature. We go free pass on the curvature.
I agree with both of those statements. It's, it's good to be consistent, and I'm fifty fifty on the color.
Yeah.
It seemed like you all want, there was something about, was it more central?
Yes, it was like...
It was standing out more?
Point of their building.
Personally, I'd probably, just me being a design person, I would probably go with like a gray on the, on the door and not a green.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't match the stone facade.
I don't think it's the green on it.
Yeah.
I agree. Thoughts?
And so what is it, brick along the bottom?
Stone, yeah.
Stone. I'm all set.
Want a gray?
Gray.
Gray.
Okay.
Sure.
And with that stone bottom, it's consistent to several other new constructs we've had in.
And, and again, just understand that we might not be able to get the, these renderings adjusted. Hopefully, we can bird, put the, that note into the quote unquote overall resolution, and I'll add it to my, my site plan, because the architect is very difficult to get a hold of.
You go with that, counsel? Jim, help me with the statement of use, where it says that the applicant knows they have to come back when they get a tenant, because I don't see it. Could be the small print somewhere else, but I don't see it under statement of use.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's under the notes.
Okay.
So applicant must come back for a site plan once they attend.
Okay. I have nothing additional. Mike?
I'm all set, thank you.
Yep. Oh. Require it. Oh, yeah. You're good with modifying that verbally?
So Tim will update the plan and the provider's plan.
Yeah. There is a lighting. The lighting plan shows its location. That we're going to use.
Okay.
But they're not considered.
Ah. Okay.
I'll make a motion for our standard seeker. Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Duvall?
Yes.
Mr. Abby?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
And I vote yes on the seeker. Neil, would you propose the motion as discussed, please?
The board notes there's a discrepancy between the location of the lights and the plan and the building and plan and building elevation. So the location of the lights on the plan are to be used for the site. Now, the site plan goal will be, site plan goal will be required by determination of the use for the property. Finally, the register will be painted gray two minutes before they will extend the side.
Thank you. Would somebody like to make that a motion?
In a form of motion.
Do we have a second? Second. Mr. Duvall?
Yes.
Mr. Abby? Yes. Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
And I vote yes to the motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
I'm not going anywhere.
Last agenda item is continuation of a site plan. This is for the property at 7201 Charlotte Road. Proposed hazardous waste transfer facility. Clean Earth. We know.
So, I do have representative from Clean Earth here, just in case there's any specific questions. They were here about a month or two ago with their initial meeting. We want, A, first, I want to make sure the board understands, we know there's more work to do on our general site plan, and we intend to do that if this moves forward. Specifically, there was two concerns that we wanted to get addressed by the board tonight to make sure that the board's comfortable, and the board's okay with these two concerns, specifically with the use of the building and the use of the site is the hazardous waste facility. I wanted to make sure that the board saw that. We added to the note, or to the pages on sheet C103, a specific blurb that Clean Earth will not be using the property for explosive manufacturing and/or storage, bulk storage, and/or sale of liquid or gaseous combustible, et cetera. Clean Earth is aware these uses are specifically prohibited and may not, and may only be allowed in the town and the planned unit development district. I believe that, you know, being on the plan addresses a lot of the concerns about what's coming in and out of the site. We did provide an Excel sheet of all the potential on materials that they're going to be distributing through here. Just understand that this is a temporary, I don't want to say storage, but a temporary holding site where they're going to repackage or redistribute some of the smaller packages into bigger packages or bigger containers, and then they'll be leaving the site no more than after like ten days, I believe it was. So that was the first thing that I wanted to make sure, that we wanted to make sure that the board was okay with how we address the hazardous material and what the site is being used for, because if the board's not comfortable with that, then we can't really move forward with the, with the site plan. The other specific concern that the property owner wants to make sure is, is okay is, there was a, Clean Earth specifically is not going to be using this asphalt that's outside of the existing chain link fence. Okay, they're only going to be parking within the chain link fence. They don't have to have very minimal employees, they don't really need all that parking, they don't really need all this parking outside the fence. However, the property owners would like to keep that asphalt pavement, because this has originally been a trucking terminal, and the way trucking terminals are always typically set up is the employees, if it's used for a trucking terminal in the future, employees typically park and stay outside the fence and then come into the site and, when it's trucking terminal. And the property owners are worried that if they get rid of all that pavement, you know, it's kind of a waste of, of that area, and they can't use it for the trucking terminal in the future if and when they, they use it for another trucking terminal. So that's their, those are the two things that I want to make sure that we address tonight, again, to make sure that we can move forward with the general site plan. We are, we understand that there's another tenant in the back that we will address once and if, if and when we move forward with everything. We'll go out there, we'll locate everything, and we'll address all the uses that are going on there, but like I said, tonight's mostly about getting these two specific concerns up in the air and understood.
You said we were providing an Excel sheet with all the materials?
Yep.
I didn't see it.
Yeah.
I did it. Is this an extra copy?
Yeah.
Did anybody else see it?
I got it, I got an email. I don't...
From Heidi?
No hard copy.
Yeah, I think we have a procedure we like trying to apply.
Yeah.
Oh, I always assume I'm getting hard copies. I didn't read through it. So I, I have it, if you need this.
But none of these materials are, again, not allowed per the code use specifically. And I made sure we vetted that with Clean Earth.
So Mark, do we have a way, a way to review those items, make sure that, I mean, make sure that there's nothing there that we would not want, because that's why I thought we were asking for... The town, the code says things like, and it talks about.
Yeah, I can tell you that I communicated with the North Street Fire Department who got that list and reviewed it, and the fire chief didn't have any particular concern about the quantities or the types of material.
Alright, good. Yeah, okay, that's fine. We'll go ahead and start with questions, Jim?
No question right now, but a comment that so long as everything's, you know, properly contained and properly handled and...
You should have also gotten pictures of the containers and how it's all stored, and made sure we gave that as well. So you'd be more comfortable understanding that it's not like just little items sitting out that are exposed.
And that the materials are moved in a timely fashion.
Yes. Again, it's a temporary site. They just reorganize them, put them in bigger containers and bigger trucks and get them out of the site.
Okay.
Chuck?
Glad to hear there's a, practically ten, ten day turnover. That's good. And not reviewing the list thoroughly, I assume anything to do with nuclear is not on it.
Oh, sure.
Okay. Just had to ask.
Mary? I'm sorry.
You have to follow certain federal regulations and everything too?
Specific permits in place from the EDC in New York State that they have to follow.
So it's pretty well controlled then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And whoever's combining them in the barrels, I mean, something could be innocent by itself, but mixing something else with it, then it becomes something else.
I'll let Jim come.
Can you approach, please?
Yep.
Come on up.
So we typically do not repackage things at a ten day. It comes from a generator. What we do at a ten day is stage it in the building, then put it back in a trailer. We don't open up containers typically. It comes packaged from the generator, we transport it, take it off a box truck, and put it on like a tractor trailer.
What does typically mean?
Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. There could be some issue where something has to be opened, but off the top of my head, not really, you know.
But, couldn't it be that the reason you're getting it is because something broke open? So it's not really a sealed?
The container that was being put in, it's packaged and at the stores.
Yeah.
And it's put in the truck at the store, and that being that it's in, sealed, and will not be picked up at the site.
Most of the containers, like, a majority of them, I don't know what the percentage, probably, probably eighty plus percent is probably a gallon size or less. We do get five gallon containers of some waste rooms. And like, in your scenario, like, say home people have a case of bleach, that's six bottles, one might have broken. If it broke it, like, at their site, chances are they had to clean it up and spill it to that. So we also have, when we pa, when they get packaged in these containers, there's an absorbent material in there, if it, you know, to absorb anything that might humiliate. That's all kind of addressed at the point of generation.
And whoever's handling the barrels is trained on... And whoever's handling the barrels is trained on how to handle them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And then your other question about that verbiage that was added here as what you would not be using on the property. To me, that's a legal question and that.
Make sure it's okay with.
Yep.
Okay, and that is acceptable, the way it's worded?
Yeah, I have a review and I have those okay with. I can't comment if it was in a specific measure of any of those items on the list. I knew that. But the way that he was giving the word that I was looking.
Okay.
And if you were thinking about the, you know, what's being mixed around or something like that, maybe it is or maybe it's not, but I'm sure you could put a note on the, on the plan stating that chemicals or that, you know, materials will not be mixed or handled and.
Thank you. And then you mentioned the property behind.
Yes, hold on a second. I apologize, I'm just writing that down.
Take your time.
Um, yeah, so in the back, right now, it's actually being used, the back area, the shaded area roughly is being used as a staging area for actually some of the eighty-one construction work. So there's a tenant there that's basically got a contractor service yard in the back of this property. I, we weren't aware of it until we started getting into the site plan and we were told about it. So we have to go out there again, if we move forward with these concerns, locate everything, show everything on this plan, how all the trucks come in and out and put all that information on the plan. So that will be added in the future if and when we move forward.
That's all I have.
Doc?
What is a situation where a material would have to be repackaged? Because he stated generally. So like a breakage?
Package may be damaged somehow in a truck, I would say.
You just.
Everything packaged and you already did containers, which may have been attested, they go through stack testing, hydrostatic testing, drop testing. Like anything that is hazardous waste that gets shipped as a waste has to go in those containers that are rated that, you know, to hold us, whatever material might be.
From that list, what's the most dangerous material that you think you would see passed through that facility?
I mean, this flammable, this corrosives. Depends. I don't know what would be more dangerous, depends on whatever given situation. But as long as it's packaged correctly, which it is, wouldn't really think it matters. Everything's packaged according to compatibility. So you wouldn't package an acid in the base in the same container. Flammable's are for the most part compatible. They get packaged by, you know, three point one, three, class three is a flammable, eight is corrosive. So they get packaged according to their group. They all have dangers, but when they're contained in a package, the danger is kind of below.
How long you been doing this?
I've been in the industry since two thousand.
Ever have an exposure issue?
Kind of issues?
An exposure issue to the chemicals?
exposure? Not on the road, like in plants occasionally when people processing that plants, sometimes something might happen.
The processing's not happening here?
Oh, no. This is, this is all transportation functions basically to increase efficiency. Like, yeah, say we have six to ten trucks come in, one tractor trailer going out. It's just to maximize efficiency and transportation.
I had a question. Is there any signage on the building?
Sign?
Signage.
Gotta be a little hard.
It's not going to say hazardous material with them. Okay.
There is a, there is a proposed new sign on the front of the building.
Yep.
Here, there's an existing sign right here is where the proposed sign is going to go and there's, there's a detail on the, on the sheet. But there's also an existing sign on the side of the building that will be coming off. Mark and I, Marc, we made note that we just gotta revise the note on the plan that states that that sign's coming down. The plan does say that the sign's coming down, but we're gonna change the way it shows up on the plan.
And the name sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where were we? Did you go yet?
Yeah, yeah, I'm also.
Where are you?
We'll stay with the chemicals at first. The county planning board talked about federal standard procedures and permitting requirements for hazardous waste being followed.
Yes, they have all the permitting place.
That's all set with.
Right. So EPA regulates ten day facilities. It's all considered in transportation up to ten days and to transport in New York, we have N Y D E C Transport Department.
Okay. Now to the pavement. Typically, always, whenever there's pavement that's not going to be used because of impervious services and storm, you know, stormwater and proper drainage and we typically like to remove that and that's why it's being recommended here. And the argument that if and when a new tenant moves in, they don't want to have to address it doesn't meet my criteria. I don't know about the rest. Nobody else mentioned it.
Yep.
I would like to see it removed.
Okay. Out of curiosity, is there any other options instead of removing it? Like, they don't have a problem, you know, fixing up, making sure it's fixed up and repaved and all that. We can add landscaping in and around it to help with the, you know, not seeing it and all that. But again, if you look at the surrounding truck terminal properties all around the, this, this area here, literally, and I didn't know this, but literally it's the same kind of setup where they have fenced an area and parking outside of the fence when it's a trucking terminal. Again.
For that use.
Yep. And this is a different use. So, but the, the property owner again is hoping that in the future, they're going to get a truck terminal here because it is a truck terminal. And again, Clean Earth is only using a very small portion of this building. So hopefully in the future, they'll have a truck terminal come in that they can use the building for.
And boot Clean Earth out?
No, 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 no. Clean Earth will have a lease and possibly an additional use. Obviously, that would have to come back here and be approved and it'd have to be shown on the plans and all that. But yes, that's the, that's the owner's main concern about the comments.
Mark, do you have the street elevations? In there?
You want to figure out?
That would be fine. You don't have the, like the photos you and I talked about? Google Earth.
Is there any issue about wetlands? Is that the swamp in those areas?
I don't believe so. Pretty much the entire site is either gravel or pavement.
Okay. They filled it in, that must be.
Yeah.
I want to make sure I got this straight. It's basically a temporary storage in ten day turnaround time to take it to the next. Okay. So we're talking about the pavement outside the fence?
Yes, which is moreover on this side.
Well, I mean, you've got this here, right?
Right. This area, they, isn't the concern. This area is not the concern of what we're talking about.
After this and then, and I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't lie. It seems to be like a lot of this over here could be.
Okay, so.
And so you've got, you do have, see the remnants of the striping. You know, if you came back here, you know.
So.
Badly parking.
Suggestion, I could, I could come up with a new parking plan that minimizes the amount of pavement needed. And then we could show removal of pavement that's not needed for a potential future area.
All of this been here?
Yes. I, this I don't, this was not their concern. It was specifically this parking area and this parking area. And we can come up with a new parking plan and then that works for the property owner. And then in theory, works for the, hopefully for the board and show a lot of this, yes, like Mark's saying, probably up in here can get removed and probably some of this can get removed depending on the parking plan that we come up with.
Property across street is a nice example.
I'm sorry?
The property across.
Okay.
Maybe a couple maple trees or something?
Yep. Okay.
Landscaping.
I think that's a good compromise.
Yeah.
So I have Mike. Or we're all set. Steve?
Yeah, I wasn't present. Present at the last meeting, I, I did read the minutes and I think it was touched on a little bit tonight, but I just want for my own clarification. Reading those minutes, they said they really weren't storing anything in the building, but it does sound like that it might be staged there for a short period of time before it's transferred into another vehicle. I don't know. Is Mr. Gustafson, is that what you have?
Yeah.
The question is I, correct me if I'm wrong, when the trucks come in, the trucks come in, some of the material will be moved into the building, but it's only going to stay in the building for a very short amount of time and then moved down to the.
Nothing's in the store overnight. So it could be in the building here at a time during a day, but at the end of the day.
So it goes from one truck to another trailer?
Yeah, typically box trucks come in and will have outgoing trailers.
And all the products are in their original containers from the pickup location of the retailer and put in these barrels. They're not emptied into these barrels.
Correct. They're individual containers.
Okay, so saying nothing overnight?
Nothing's inside.
In the building, on the trailer it would be.
Oh, okay. And they said something about it was just going to be used for supplies would be in there. So maybe just equipment or supplies for just.
Inside the building would be supplies.
But just, so supplies just facilitate the work that's.
Yeah, there could be, like, I guess empty drums kept in there for drivers to take, maybe other material the drivers might use, manifest paperwork.
Okay.
So they're going from a smaller truck to a larger storage, where you're combining. So you're taking three or four different trucks and then combining them into one larger truck.
Right.
Okay. Um, is there any practice or policy or procedure for any type of anticipated spill that could occur for one of the barrels?
We, I think we have a contingency plan, transportation contingency plan. We actually should have.
Okay.
We can put that.
Yeah. I'm just thinking about the fire department having to respond to a spill during a, how about an inventory of that material? What's coming in ideally basis? Is that, is there an inventory kept to that? So you know what product is spilled out of this barrel if it has?
Yeah, everything's shipped on a manifest. So everything in the truck is going to be accounted for in the manifest.
Okay, so responding, first front or front, you'd be able to, some people will probably, hey, this, this is the product that they know what they're dealing with, that they showed up at first bill, response or someone goes down from an office. Okay. That's it.
Good.
I have another question.
Sure.
So the barrels, are they moved with forklifts?
They're, they're on pallets mostly. And it could be occasionally when they're not, but I pretty much when they load on the trailer, they're palletized.
Okay.
They come from, actually, no, when they come from the generator, they may not be on a pallet on the box truck. They may or may not be. But if they're not, they will be put in a pallet as they're coming off the truck and.
With a forklift? And and so you're getting deliveries of brand new barrels, right? To put them in?
An inventory of, yeah.
Okay, then they're not reused.
It would be, some might go reconditioning, but when they come in, freezing those drums, they're going outbound to a T S D.
And then you don't get them back?
We don't see those drums.
Yeah, okay.
No, I got two more questions, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, I have a question too.
The fire hydrant's all set? And then it talks about the improvement to the pavement, the repairs at the discretion of the applicant. That's not typical.
Yeah, I mean, yes, there's some statements on there. Uh, two items really. It, it says that the pavement areas will be repaired and fenced.
Yep.
But those are qualified with the discretion of the applicant or owner. We really don't know.
Okay, I'll tighten that up. Yeah, we don't, that's not typical for us.
Okay.
There's a lot of it.
Right, so I understand. There's a lot of areas, especially asphalt, if you look at the pictures, that have to be repaved and resurfaced and all that. So try and identify individual areas. Well, I just thought a general note that they're gonna generally repave it or improve the asphalt was typical, but I'll make sure they take the whole, per the, at the discretion of the applicant and I'll take those and take those off.
Somebody else have a question?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Um, okay, so you said the, the materials or the, the drums are going to be stored on trailers, correct? Okay, is there going to be like a locked fence after hours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Neil? Mark?
Uh, I'm good.
All right, we're set for now. And so the next time we'll discuss the additional tenant and.
Oh, yeah, we'll have all that information for you. This will help us move forward. So yes, we'll have the additional tenant information and we'll have a, hopefully a full, complete site plan for you.
Terrific.
All right. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our agenda items. Any discussion from the team?
I have a question.
Sir?
This for Steve again? Every time I drive through Cicero, which is a bunch of times during the week, it's really embarrassing to see that junkyard, a couple of doors down there. He has maybe.
Which junkyard?
One across from the John Deere dealer.
Yeah, well, I think I told you before, we've, we've had that in court. And we'll, we'll look at it again and see if that's, that's necessary. Yeah.
Isn't it over so many cars like in back there considers it a junkyard?
No.
Really? Okay, I just agree.
No. What, what we're going by is the approved site plan from many a year ago for auto sales and repair there or whatever it was. And we're making them stick to that. There's always been auto sales. I agree with you, those vehicles, that might be the next step. You know, are they really service vehicles? Are they just vehicles that are being used for parts? Then that would be a junkyard. It's difficult to substantiate. So we, we, our previous actions there were based on outside the scope of putting an approved site plan and the number of vehicles that were in excess of that. He's probably, he did clean it up. It looks like he's going back in the other direction again.
Because it looks like there's got to be minimum thirty cars out back.
Always probably more than that.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the approved site plan was from twenty years ago. It might have been fifty-five vehicles in total. I believe he's exceeding that. So maybe he was the last time. So with something we'll have to look at again. Yep.
Appreciate it.
What else?
Uh, I update on Dollar General. Are they? Have they put the, the stone back on there?
Yeah, the materials is scheduled to be delivered here in the near future. They have, they ordered it. It hasn't been installed yet. They're still waiting for the fire hydrant to be installed. The Aqua was supposed to get there this week, but I think they had an emergency to go to and they weren't able to install the hydrant. So when they complete their items is when we'll be able to issue a certificate of occupancy.
It's coming soon.
So they're.
Yeah, they're moving in that direction. Yep.
Good intent there.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, I have a discussion.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, do you want me?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go. No, no, I mentioned it to Mark before.
Okay. Um, so up here, this is the access C N Y project. The architect came back and they've, you can see the footprint of the original building, you know, outlined in here. And what they're doing is modifying the footprint of the building to the darker outline here. And then they're shuffling around to accommodate that. They're, they're shuffling around some of the like the play area and those types of things and, and the sidewalks to, you know, to accommodate the modifications to the building. And they approached Steve and myself and asked if there was the need for them to come back to the planning board for a reapproval of the plan or if they could consider this a minor modification and the codes office could, you know, approve it as a, as a deviation, minor deviation to the approved site plan. So, uh, I guess Steve and I thought it was best that we just show the board this and get your opinion, whether you'd like to see a final full set of plans, have them come in and explain the changes, or whether you think that this is minor enough that, uh, they could just proceed administratively.
The changes is enlarging slightly?
No, it's, it's actually the footprint's getting smaller. And, um, you know, they're not changing any of the setback, they, they had to get a variance for the front yard setback. They're still complying with that. Uh, the storm water's staying the same, there's less impervious area than there was previously. The parking area staying the same. So it's just really modifications around the building footprint and the envelope around it.
Well, the dark green or dark orange, sorry, is the new footprint?
Yeah, that, that would be the new footprint of the building. It's, it's outlined in the heavy black there.
Will they have room for everything they planned to use in there with the smaller footprint?
My understanding is these changes are being made by request of the agency that is, is helping funding the the project, so. It's, it's, the design's based on their needs, yeah, requirements. So the answer is yes.
I, I was wondering with all this fu- funding cutbacks, if that was going to be affected with that?
I don't know.
I'd like to see some machinery in there.
My thoughts are they're, they're fairly simple, as long as you two have reviewed them and, um, you're okay with.
Yeah, and they will provide an updated site plan with these changes to me, but, you know.
So the board knows the process, it's, it's really the call, the code enforcement officer is whether or not they approve it or move it forward to us, but he's asking us our opinion, so.
I agree with you.
But I'm comfortable with just making it simple. And only internally. Okay.
It's smaller, are they going to have less employees in there, less residents?
Yeah, I didn't get into that, that with them, but my assumption would be less, if there's less.
Everything.
Yeah, if there's, if there's less, um, clients, then I would imagine it'd be probably less staff, yeah.
We don't need a motion, I assume.
No, I mean, that project has to substantially. It's focused. General consensus that that's substantially confirmed and.
So Steve can move forward with his decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now that we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.